Call to order for Watertown City Council meeting for September 2 of 2025. Please rise while Hank Rosso, the chaplain of Watertown Fire and Rescue leads us in prayer.
I think it's distorted when...
Thank you. Please join me in prayer. Our good heavenly fathers, we come to you this evening. We want to first say thank you for your love and your care over our community that we take for granted sometimes and think sometimes a terrible news report from another community like ours to realize just how blessed we are. Thank you for the love that come and bond we all share in our love for the community of God. We thank you for the care as you watch over us through our first responders, both police and fire. Lord, you're so good to us through other services that we take for granted. We have safety on each one of them. We thank you for your love and for this meeting together.
What's up Charlie? Go, go!
Councilman Jurens, we can hear you.
In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Thank you Hank for saying that and we'll do a pledge now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Manager Collins, find out who's here.
Okay. Jurens?
Yes.
Peters?
Here.
Shuddy?
Here.
Allen?
Here.
Hoyer?
Here.
Hollein?
Here.
Mormon?
Here.
Thank you.
Quorum is established. Chair will entertain a motion to approve today's agenda. Motion made by Councilman Allen, seconded by Councilman Peters. Any discussion on that, council? The motion is to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We're on to open forum. Is there anybody here who would like to address the council on something that is not on tonight's agenda? I'll close open forum and we will go straight into, excuse me, item 8A, a presentation on the objectives of the city manager's office. For that, we will go to said city manager, Alan Steger.
Thank you, Mayor. Just bear with me a second as it comes up on the screen. What I'm going to share for the benefit of the public this afternoon is a summary of the goals and objectives that I've put together working with the city council as well as the steering committee that, the succession planning committee that was involved in hiring me as, as the city manager. This is a summary of a larger set of objectives that myself and the department heads are working on to accomplish for the city. These objectives are organized into four primary categories and I'll speak briefly on each one. Starting with our team members, it came through very clear to me through the interview and hiring process that our council cared deeply about the team that we have in place within the city. Some of you may recall that we also had a charter review committee that went through several interviews with most of the city staff and presented a report to the city council. Much of what I've committed to do in terms of onboarding with our city team members has been derived from the feedback received in that charter review committee report. And so, just to summarize here, I've been meeting with and understanding each of the important roles that the key leaders in our city play. I also want to formalize the structures in the system of governance that we use as a city staff to do our day-to-day work. And then also looking at what the ideal organization for the city looks like, acknowledging that we have a hole in the organizational structure in the public works area that, that has been vacant most of the year. And so, real soon I'll be publishing a new organizational structure that shows how we intend to manage the public works functions. And then finally, as directly noted in the charter review committee, the team is looking for a mechanism to provide feedback and a mechanism to provide reporting of concerns. And I do intend to roll out a reporting system through an independent third party early next year. Second set of goals is really strengthening our fiscal processes and accountability. I won't go into all of the detail, but what I will say is the objectives are oriented around, number one, preparing a budget for 2026. Number two, ensuring that we've got some more in-depth reporting for the council and the public on how we're doing throughout the year. And then finally, some more longer-term looking goals, including ensuring that we take a look at the council's priority projects and build them into a multi-year financing plan so that we can be looking forward to what our needs are beyond just the current budget year. Looking at our community vision, as stated in the council priority projects and also our CIP, is the next major area. And it is our objective to be working with you as a council to develop a rolling 10-year strategy for what we need to be looking at as a community. We've already heard the feedback from prior councils that there are some important projects that you desire in the community already. First and foremost is a street maintenance facility that's been on the table for quite some time. And so, by the end of November, it is our objective to bring to you a proposed cost estimate for a street facility, facility as well as a means of financing the facility. Secondly, also important in your priorities has been ensuring that the fire and medical response times in the east part of the city meet the needs that, that we have with a growing population, not only living in that area of the city, but working there throughout the day. This will be a multi-year plan. As some of you know, building the brick and mortar facility is the easy part of this plan. The more difficult part of the plan is to staff the resources for the long term in that part of the city. The fire chief, assistant chief and team and I have been working through plans and, and will be presenting a proposal for you to consider by the end of the year. Also important is myself and the staff have been working pretty closely with various stakeholder groups addressing housing concerns in the community. I'm happy to report that after a slow summer, we've, we've got some engaged teams again. And real soon you'll be seeing some information published in terms of housing, community meetings and some structure around the various projects that, that we are collaborating on as a city with the stakeholder groups in the community. Finally, we currently have a city strategy. I think before we get together as a council to refresh that strategy, which was last put together in 2022, I need to take what was in that strategy and summarize it for you. And then we can work together as a team so that the staff can take your vision for the next level of the strategy and roll it forward.
Thanks. I heard you were up to something.
Councilman Jurens, you're not, not on mute. The fourth set of goals are oriented around what I'm calling community stakeholders. And this has involved working with the various external organizations that we do partner with as a city to ensure that we understand their purposes as a city.
I'm 90% of the road game, so if you would like to get on this.
Nick, are you able to perhaps mute him?
Yes. All right. Hold on.
Thank you, Nick. Also, working with the stakeholder groups is to ensure that as, not only the city manager, but the department heads, that we have visibility throughout the community through the media organizations and the service clubs to make sure that we are telling our story and showing the vision as a community at least once per quarter. And then finally, just intergovernmental relationships and ensuring that the lines of communication are always open with our partners. Just some evidence of some things in my short tenure that we've done is we've nearly finalized a memorandum of understanding with, with the county, the Watertown Municipal Utilities and the Watertown Development Company on some developments in Calvin Park. That's a degree of intergovernmental collaboration that I don't think we've seen in the past, especially with the county at the table. And I hope that we will, we'll be looking at future projects as stakeholders together. That's what I've prepared in terms of a presentation. And I'll conclude my remarks and take any questions or comments that, that the council may have.
Thank you. Council, I'm going to open it up for questions and comments. Councilman Allen?
I just want to say thanks for putting the objectives together and doing a very collaborative job of asking for input and structuring things to allow us to provide that input. So I appreciate it a lot. And I think you've done a good job on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. I want to say I like, it's almost as if you're taking the budget and not just as a singular budget that is like separate, like this separate thing that we pass once a year, but you're actually integrating it into the daily operations of the city and constantly refreshing that. Because in the end, I've always made this point, politicians, elected officials, we can say whatever we want. In the end, where we allocate the city's tax dollars is really where we show our priorities. What we fund is what we are supporting. And that speaks louder than anything that we can say. So I appreciate what you're doing here in constantly making that budget an integrated part of the city's functionality on a daily basis. So I thank you for that very much.
Thank you. And it, it should be a living document. It is a plan at a point in time. And as you will see later in the agenda, we're bringing to you an ordinance to supplement some areas of spend. That's only giving you part of the picture. And as we roll out the tools, you will get the complete picture in the future to see not only areas that we need to supplement because we have overspent, we'll be able to show you the areas that we have underspent in the budget as well.
Any further comments, council? Thank you, city manager. Item 9A is an approval of a contract with Eagleview in the amount of $418,000 for aerial photography services and a memorandum of understanding between the city of Watertown and Cottington County for shared aerial photography services. City manager Steger, please tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor. And this is another example of how we've been collaborating with Cottington County. This agreement provides the, the aerial photographs that are available on our GIS website. The city staff utilizes this tool daily in terms of understanding different property characteristics. This agreement is a six-year agreement. Cottington County will be paying 65% of the agreement, leaving about $150,000 as the city's obligation over a six-year period. I recommend your approval.
Going to get a motion to approve the contract. Moved by Councilman Peters, seconded by Councilman Hoyer. Open it up for conversation, comments. Councilman Mormon?
Just for the public's information, because I saw some comments about that money and aerial imagery, this isn't just a Cessna 150 flying over Watertown taking pictures. This actually comes from outer space, from satellites, these images that we're using. And the images that we gain from that are used as basically the foundation for all of our computer software through the GIS. And everything from land ownership lines to locating services, when you call, do the call before you dig, everything comes back to looking at the, at the GIS service, at these images for all the information that is needed. So it is a very, very vital tool. It's not a cheap tool, but it is one that is used nonstop throughout the day, every day.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? The motion correctly stated is to approve the contract and the MOU. And all those in favor of doing so will vote aye, opposed nay. Manager Collins, please call the vote. I think we yelled at him too much.
Well, then we muted him.
Nick, you might have to unmute him.
He can actually unmute himself. He might not just, he just might not be hearing you guys.
There's a voice speaking. Councilman Jurens, if you could hear us and you would like to vote, you can unmute yourself and vote aye or nay. But Manager Collins, just continue with the roll call.
Okay. Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Hoyer?
Aye.
Hollein?
Aye.
Mormon?
Aye.
The vote was unanimous in favor. I declare that motion passed. Item 10A is a first reading of an ordinance establishing the zoning designation of R1 single-family residential district for the property to be known as Kenneth and Arlene Lukinon addition. We'll go to our community development manager, Brandy Hanton, for more information.
Thank you, Mayor. So as stated, this is a two-part annexation and zoning. Today, we are just doing the first reading of the zoning for this property. It's approximately two acres located along Golf Course Road. It is actually just to the east of Hole 5, I believe, on the Prairie Winds Golf Course, right here on my screen, if AgT wants to share that. Otherwise, it is on your agenda packet too with the vicinity map. So, the property owners of this existing single-family residential dwelling also own the property surrounding it that currently resides within the county. The main purpose of annexing and zoning just the house at this time is so that it has connectivity to a city water and sewer, as today it has a septic system and then county or rural water. So, and all of the city services are directly adjacent to the property and they will connect upon annexing and zoning and plating. Other, and that also ties into the requirement for the sewer water consent decree, which, because this property is within their territory, they will have that buyout and will deal with Watertown Municipal Utilities with that. There's also a trunk sewer assessment fee that the city will collect for the sewer main within Golf Course Road that will be collected at the time of plating. And then the park dedication fee that is referenced in the background of the agenda packet, background item, the, we brought that to the park board on Tuesday, which the, after reviewing closer the ordinance, let me find the, I have that pulled up here for your reference too, there is no park dedication required for this property because it does exist as a residential dwelling and it will not be subdivided further, which is an allowance for not requiring park dedication. It also does have a bike trail connectivity along Golf Course Road already, so it is contributing to the recreational components. So, with that, I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All right. Thank you very much. We'll have that back for a second reading, probably at the next meeting. Item 10B is a first reading of an ordinance authorizing the finance officer to certify the property tax levy to the Cottington County auditor. City manager Steger.
Thank you, Mayor. The property tax levy for 2026 has been calculated in accordance with state statute. Currently, we are allowed to increase our levy by the lesser of 3% or the consumer price index change for the year. The consumer price index change was 2.9%, so we will be increasing our levy by the 2.9%. In addition to that, state law allows us to capture property taxes on the growth in property, so new properties added to the tax rolls in the last year. That's an additional 2% increase. It results in about a $220,000 increase in property taxes overall compared to 2025. However, I think the mill levy actually went down a little bit because the property valuations have gone up in the community. Standby for any questions.
Thank you. Council? Councilman Peters?
Alan, I got a question as it relates to Senate Bill 216 that passed in legislature. How does that impact what we're looking at here? Have we felt any of that?
We haven't felt it too much because in the past, we've pretty much held to the, the requirements of Senate Bill 216. So, we haven't had major increases in our ask in the property tax levy in prior years. And so, as we implement the new, the new statute, it's following the numbers that we've done in the past is, is the best way that I can put it.
Could it, could it catch up to us maybe next year or the year after?
It could. It could, especially as our property tax valuations continue to grow as we, we do more development and some TIFs start to perform. It can catch up to us and it is something we need to pay attention to in future years.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Peters, would you do a favor for everyone watching and explain what Senate Bill 216 was?
Alan, why don't you do that? I'll get down a rabbit hole.
I believe Senate Bill 216 was, was the bill that essentially put the cap on how much a city can raise their levy each year. And so, for us, it's, it's the 2.9%. But through our conservative budgeting in prior years, we were pretty much holding ourselves to a cap similar to that anyway.
Yeah, the only thing I would add to that, and you nailed it, is essentially a 3% limit on how much we on how much we can raise year after year. And so if we found ourselves saying we need 4%, we could only do 3 by the law that took effect July 1st of this year. So highly contested and debated bill in the legislature, and I'm anticipating another fiery debate coming up this year.
Any further comments? Hearing none, we will move on to item 11A, a second reading of an ordinance providing for a supplemental appropriation for the general fund, park and rec fund, E911 fund, and airport fund. City Manager Steger.
This is a second reading. As a reminder, many of the items covered in this supplemental appropriation have been covered either through grant revenues or through insurance proceeds. A couple of items that are true supplementals, we're actually covering through council contingency and other areas of underspending. The two primary areas that we don't have insurance or grant money funding is, number one, the audit. We had to switch firms to Aid Bailey earlier this year. That is not something that the budget contemplated. Secondly, a contribution to the Mother of God monastery is the city's contribution to the daycare project that the monastery took on, and that was approved by council earlier this year to utilize the council contingency line item to fund that. And then finally, we've got mosquito control is one that's a true budget supplement as we have had to overspend on that item this year.
All right. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the ordinance. Motion made by Councilman Shuddy, seconded by Councilman Peters. Let's open it up for questions and comments. All right. Hearing no questions or comments, I feel okay with just a voice vote. All those in favor of approving this ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We're on to item 11B, a second reading of an ordinance revising, or revised ordinance of the City of Watertown to amend ordinance title 12, adding chapter 12.30 in relation to mobile vendors. We'll go to our city engineer, Justin Peterson.
I struggle with that every week. This is the second reading for the mobile vendor ordinance. We've, staff has had, there's been several discussions with council on this issue. The permit is a yearly permit for vendors to operate in the public right-of-way downtown parking lots and park facilities. So with that, stand by for questions.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the ordinance, or the revised ordinance? Motion made by Councilman Allen, seconded by Councilman Peters. I will open it up for public testimony. Is there anyone who would like to testify on this item? I would like to invite you, I mean, and just please identify yourself for those who might not know you. Just make sure that the red light should be on like that. You have to press down hard. There we go.
There it goes.
Yep.
My name is Jamie Stricker. I am the zoo educator at Bramble Park Zoo.
Thank you.
I guess I'm just questioning how this will affect events that we have at the zoo currently, or maybe we'll have in the future. Reading the background information with, in the past, people needing the materials on street permit and things like that, that never affected any of the events that we had within zoo grounds. So I'm just, I don't know, thinking how much harder this is going to make my events that I have. We currently have about three events, the food truck festival, Sip and Safari, where we ask food trucks to come, because we have a small concession stand and don't have the food opportunities at the zoo, so it just sort of adds something to the event. And so it's already hard to get food trucks to travel, especially when I call and they're in Sioux Falls or somewhere else, and they say, oh, Watertown's too far. If I'm adding more paperwork, more of an expense to them, they won't come. They already cancel last minute. Our local ones are awesome. Trying to get others to travel, they're, oh, the Chiswick Festival competes, we're not coming to you, we're going there. So I just feel like adding more fees and paperwork is going to make it harder for me to have a unique event. And not only are events that are in zoo grounds, but we have a couple of trucks that come about once a month and park in the parking lot, and we advertise them, they come out. Just how it's going to affect all of that. And then also, I was just reading it again, and I want some clarity on, will this affect things like chili cook-off, where we are asking service organizations, families, businesses to come and cook? Would they be considered a mobile vendor because they are preparing food on-site to hand out? I just, I'm kind of confused with how this will affect zoo events.
All right. Can we get some answers on that? Who would like to take that?
Yeah, the events that the zoo holds, they, it's kind of like the other event would be like the Thursday Night Live. Like, if there's food trucks for those events, they're already covered within the event. So if the event's approved, there doesn't need to be a separate permit. So the short answer is it shouldn't affect your events at all.
So then would I have to do something to get permission, and then they would be blanketed under that?
It won't change what you're, like, what you're doing now.
Okay. So it won't change how we're operating now. I currently do have some documents that Matt Robey had designed about insurance and all of that. The health inspector does come and inspect some of the food trucks on-site. So I think we're doing the things right that way with them having to have a million-dollar policy and reporting their taxes and things. But I just wanted to make sure this permit wasn't going to change.
And in regards to chili cook-off?
They're not selling the chili.
Yeah. Okay.
So we should be good?
So as long as it's okay, so, okay.
Okay. I just want, so, please let me know if there is something in the future that I do need to do if this is adopted so that we are following the rules. But I'm trying to grow events and...
Well, and thank you, Jamie. And I know that you weren't sure if you wanted to testify, but I know that it's a big deal for the zoo, some of these events. And if it's a big deal for the zoo, then it's a big deal for Watertown, and we should have, it is good to have the question asked and answered in the affirmative so that you can continue to do it without any undue or increased bureaucracy over it.
Thank you.
Councilman, okay. Is there anyone else who would like to testify on this? I'll close public testimony, open it up for council. Councilman Shuddy.
Thank you, Mayor. So a couple of quick questions. What club is it that serves hot chocolate at the parade, Thanksgiving parade? Does it affect their, their being able to, I can't remember what it's, the Boy Scouts? Is that what it is, I believe? They have little stands on the sidewalk that sells hot chocolate. So I'm just curious, this is affect, the hot chocolate stands?
I think we would treat that the same way as a lemonade stand. I don't believe they are selling for a price. I think they take a donation.
That was my second question. Is there a difference, as Councilman Hoyer had mentioned, if it's being given away or donation? This ordinance doesn't affect that type of a setup, correct? Okay. That's what I wanted to follow up with. Thank you.
Councilman Hoyer.
My only question, since we did clarify that for Jamie, is, so for food vendors and stuff, what is the situation where they would then be required to actually purchase a permit?
If they're operating kind of on their own...
So as long as they're going to like a private event for a private thing?
If the event itself is covered, the intent is, they wouldn't need a permit.
Okay, so just...
Because the event already is approved to, for, you know, in the park or in the right-of-way or whatever it is.
Okay. And then, so like if somebody, say, is parking in like a private business's parking lot, it's not an event, would they then have to get one?
The private, private, if it's private property, it doesn't affect this, or the this ordinance does not affect private.
So it's just literally if somebody ever chooses to go to a public spot out on their own, then they are required to get a permit to do so?
Yeah.
I would just ask, then, is that the interpretation that we had when this was written?
Sorry, I was thinking about something Jamie said. With the zoo, in other words, their event and the mobile trucks that they have for their event are fine, but it would prevent, because they'd have to get a permit from what I'm going to call like a bootlegger coming onto the parking lot because they're having a mobile truck event, and they're trying to almost like impede, but not impede. They're not, you know, on the other side of the zoo, they're like in the parking lot, like, yeah, we're going to kind of sneak in. They would have to get a permit, and/or Jamie would be able to say, you have to go because you're not part of our business. Kind of like when they had the food truck outside of the ballpark. The organization would be able to come forward, in this case, the zoo, and say, hey, you're not part of our event, you need to get a permit. The permit would be denied because it has to go through part of the permitting process, it would be vetted through park and rec. So, but sorry, now to your question. Say that again.
I just want to make sure, because I don't want us to backpedal on somebody if we mix or match this or anything. So like, let's use the one as an example in the former Sturtemans parking lot, like, since it is in a private spot, but it is in the city. Are they clear?
They're clear. It's between them and the property owner. Yep, it's their private property. So you're, they're okay.
All right. Any further questions or comments? And I think city engineer and city attorney for the clarification, because, yeah, it's just good to know what is covered and that it's not actually adding a whole lot of bureaucracy. In fact, I view this more now as a protection mechanism for unwanted food vendors from, as the city attorney, did you say poaching?
I used the wrong term. I said bootlegging, but poaching's a better word.
Bootlegging. Because we actually have had...
It was all the liquor discussion earlier, sorry.
So just to explain to the public, we actually have had instances where food trucks that were not invited, not even wanted at an event, were setting up right at an event where, let's say, a nonprofit organization was having something, whether that be like baseball, and they were selling their own food and drinks, and they were doing that partly as a fundraiser for them, but then a food truck would set up right outside of it, and everyone just kind of assumes that because it's there, it's okay. But there was nothing in it, in the city, prior to this, to allow, let's say, the people hosting that event to say, I'm sorry, you don't have a license, you haven't gotten approval, we ask you to leave. So it's more to protect people. So I'm okay with that, as long as it isn't going to impede upon great events like at the zoo or some other places.
Right. I will point out something that did get added is that there is an ability to be in the public area if you are, not like at those events or anything, but like saying there's an ice cream truck. That was one of our concerns. So like, if an ice cream truck is going around, as long as it doesn't establish itself for more than 20, or sorry, for more than one hour, they're fine.
Sure.
It's just, feel free. But yeah, the whole point was to make it less restrictive and more accommodating.
All right. Thank you. Any further comments? The motion is to approve the revised ordinance. All those in favor will say aye, opposed nay. Manager Collins, please call the roll.
Jerrance?
He might have gone off. He's still on, but...
Peters?
Here, er... Yes. Take that, Lynn.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Hoyer?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Mormon?
Aye.
Unanimous in favor, motion carries. We're on to other business, other business or council member announcements. I'm going to actually ask council, go back, I'm going to go back to the work session. There was a few comments, I'll say, I agreed with Councilman Allen, that I think that there's some things that need to be resolved on this, and because for me, it's not just about lowering the fee. There are other issues that I think need to be resolved, but I don't want to be the hindrance to it. But I would, the transferability, the enforcement of the auditing system, the footprint of video lottery potential, these are some questions that I would like to have resolved. Do we cap the number? Do we, you know? These are some issues that I would like to see resolved that, to me, make the discussion of the fee secondary, because if you restrict the license so that it's incredibly restrictive, then it probably is worth less. But if you allow for more, if you allow for, let's say, the potential of getting a second license for video lottery, then this license all of a sudden becomes quite a bit more valuable. So to set a price on something that we don't even know what the restrictions are, to me, is missing the point of just completely clarifying what it is we're allowing issuance of. So I guess I would like to have some further clarification on that. However, I'm not exactly sure on how to go about that, because if we bring this forward just as a $25,000 charge at the next council meeting, I would probably ask council to consider some revisions or amendments on that, but then we'd have a very complicated hearing. I would prefer to have something along the lines of the mobile vendors where we get, let's say, a full, complete ordinance proposed for our consideration. I don't know, I don't want to speak, this is just my concern, and I'm asking council what your thoughts are on it. How would you like to go about it? Councilman Allen?
Are you suggesting a small working group again, similar to the mobile vending?
I'd be okay with that.
I'm not sure, you know, who has the, you know, who wants to be involved, but might work.
I'd be open to that. Councilman Shuddy?
Well, yeah, so on that, I mean, could we include some of the people that have spoke up in this process to be able to, because sometimes if we can work together as a team, as a city, instead of us against them, but if we can get some other people involved in this process to kind of work through these, because great information was brought up tonight, information I wasn't aware of, some of these ideas on how much we restrict it. So we're getting closer, but is there a way to do it to where even maybe a better buy-in on folks if we really do it together versus, we're just going to come up with this as a city, and here you go?
Councilman Hoyer?
I would just toss out and caution, in some ways, bringing somebody with a vested interest into that group may color it a certain way, no matter what. It's the same reason that I'm not going to be a part of that working group, just because I could somehow potentially, at some point, have a vested interest or something. But I think you guys could benefit from pulling those folks and making sure you know what their views are on it, or even some of the public with it, but then make your decisions from there. It might help you to just have clarity on it, I don't know. That would be my recommendation, because I think you know how the license holders feel. I think you know how restaurants kind of feel too, but, no, it's up to you guys.
Yeah, thank you. City Manager Steger?
Staff would find it very helpful to have a small working group, and I would recommend that we address the restrictions you may want to place on a license first, and then, secondly, determine what the value of that license should be with restrictions.
I think what we'll do is, we will allow this possibly for, I think a small working group is probably a good step to, the same thing that we did do with mobile vendors and a few other things, where we invite councilmen to ask your questions, and then those who are interested in finding the answers and getting back to the full council and the community would be a good way of doing it. So I think that is how we will... So I think that is how we will proceed and I do, City Councilman Jurens is listening. He did text me and just say, thanks for the comments, and he thinks that we could get answers to a lot of these questions. And probably come up with something. So I don't want to speak for him, but I think that's what we'll do is just go into a a small group setting, invite all councilmen to ask your questions and we will get answers to them. And we will just share the information as much as we possibly can before we bring forward probably what's going to be an ordinance. Because I think it's going to be more complicated than a resolution as a fee. So I think we're looking at an ordinance, which is probably a good way to go, have two readings on it, so. Any comments on that? Any other council announcements? I actually do, I am going to go to our city attorney, Lisa Carrico. She has an announcement on a policy that she would like to see in place for recusals.
As I was going through the presentations to the different boards and the, and before this council about the open meeting laws. And also given different questions I've been getting from council on conflicts of interest. Some municipalities and some boards and actually some corporate boards, they actually have as a separate agenda item right at the beginning before they get started is to identify whether or not a conflict exists. Also in situations where it is not a direct conflict of interest and a council person does their own self-assessment and decides I can be impartial and I'm making a vote. Having that process in our agenda every time helps support any challenges to those decisions. Or I would should say goes against any challenges to those decisions that you do make ultimately. It also gives a formal time for if another council member feels that someone is conflicted out. It gives a formal time for that to occur and then we don't have to go through it with each and every item. And some of you may not know whether or not someone else has a conflict in an item and it forces that council person to do that self-assessment before the agenda, before the meeting even begins for everything that is on the agenda. I like it. It's clean and it's formal. So with that, City Manager Steger indicated that with the permission of the mayor, we'll put that on the agenda as an item. And so it will always be a standing item on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to explain to people also that Robert's Rules does allow for another member of a governing body to ask a question as to the possible conflict of another member of a governing body. So you can ask that, but largely it is an honor system and a self-assessment issue. Councilman Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. I like the notion, I've been on a number of boards where we signed a conflict of interest statement when we came on to the board. That clarified what might constitute a conflict of interest and our recognition of the fact that we understood that going forward. That gives us some cover, I think, to say, we understand that there might be potential conflicts, what constitutes a conflict. And what we agree to do if there is such a conflict. So I, I like having a document that we might be able to sign off on. I think that's a good idea. I'm not sure if that's where you're going exactly, but I like that. And true, I mean, I guess at every meeting we should be thinking, is there a potential conflict or not? But, thank you.
A few other things, I would ask council and the community if there's something that we can do to make these meetings either more efficient or more visually appealing, more informative for the, for the community. I will say that I personally think that how you run a meeting is incredibly important to how the public can perceive the information and have faith in the proceedings. And it's one of the things that I've taken a lot of, put a lot of effort in since I've been mayor. There's going to be a few other small changes that we're going to be doing. I think we discussed potentially taking away like the monitor at the testimony desk because it just makes it very difficult to see the person testifying. Not only for the councilman up here, but also if you're watching on TV, it just has a strange visual and that is really kind of a leftover from the old city council station at the old city hall. We really don't need it. We will also probably be putting up a podium so those, those people who want to testify while standing up can do so. And then also some things like, as you noticed, Manager Collins tonight would call the roll. But the actual motion passing, motion failing is done by the mayor because it is the governing body that dictates. So the vote can be called, but then I will just say, the outcome of the vote was, let's say, five in favor, two opposed. Has the majority, motion carries, bam, it's done. And that's how we'll do that. So I welcome any constructive comment as to how we conduct our meetings. So, anyway. Any other announcements from the council? Councilman Hoyer?
Some of these are going to tie back a little bit, but just, we mentioned the overhead imagery stuff with GIS before tonight. Just want to make it aware to the public, you have access to that interactive map. You just go on the city website, you can Google it, Watertown, South Dakota, GIS. And then you can actually see basically what things are zoned, you can see who owns what property, all that information is public, so take use of that. It is a cool tool and you can do lots of fun things with it. Also, just wanted to check back and remind, we haven't addressed the alley over here and I'm curious to see still what's going to be proposed with that. But the idea of putting that reflective mirror over there to help with sightlines, so you can see around that corner and make sure you're not having a pedestrian come up on those electric scooters that are whipping by. Or they can see you too, just anything to help kind of trigger the eye and maybe the police department has some thoughts on that. I know they were doing some traffic counts and stuff over there. Otherwise too, and I just noticed this because I'm sitting here, but the public restrooms have a flashing, blinking crazy light that comes on at night. I look right at it from my seat every time. If we could address that maintenance issue, that'd be fantastic. And then the last thing, most exciting thing. I just want to say happy birthday to our community development manager, Brandy Hatton. Happy birthday.
Actually, thank you for doing that, Councilman. City Manager Steger or Captain Rehorse, do you have any comment on the reflect, I actually was wondering the same thing. If you remember, basically if you're pulling out, it is a very awkward.
The Traffic Safety Committee has looked at it. They've looked at the traffic counts. And the recommendation is to make the alley a one-way entrance-only alley. And that should be happening shortly. However, the demolition of the adjacent building will be happening shortly as well, so it may be a moot point.
Okay. One way's boo. That's how I get to county fair quick, guys, come on. I'll let you take that up with the traffic committee. Councilman Shuddy?
Being that we like, you know, get our facts and our everything straight here, details, we didn't get the age of the birthday.
Any further council announcements? Councilman Mormon?
Just a couple. Just a couple of quick shout-outs. The Friday night, we had the first home football game at the new stadium and it was phenomenal facility. I would encourage anybody who can, can come, to come out, enjoy that new facility, all the light shows that they can do now with LED lights and the instant replay of plays that they can do on the big Jumbotron. Just want to give a shout-out to the school system and the beautiful facility that they have there. Quick shout-out for a running back by the name of Lincoln Scott that lives in Ward A, had a beautiful 50-yard run that night. And I also want to mention, just, just a quick shout-out for the city park staff and Bryce Lawrence. They've been working so hard this summer to try and give, give the public a beautiful city park. And they keep getting rained on and they keep getting flooded on and they keep doing everything they can. But just want to acknowledge, you know, all the work that they're doing out there and how much Mother Nature is fighting against them. And just one other thing, a week and a half ago, we had out at the airport that kites, bikes and flights. My family went out there, my son had a chance to go on an airplane ride and that was just an incredible event for the community. Lake Erie Tech students and their instructor pilots, I think they had like four or five planes giving kids rides all day. And it was so much fun to watch the planes come in and land. They would take off to the west, they would go over Lake Compesca, around over Lake Pelican, make a lap over town and then come landing from the east. And you'd see these little kids come off the plane with just the biggest smiles. And I got to believe that was probably the first time for a lot of kids to get to go for a plane ride. So I just want to give a shout-out to Lake Erie Tech and our airport staff and everybody that put that on. I think you made a lot of little kids' dreams come true of getting to fly for the first time. So, that's all.
Thank you. Councilman Allen?
I'll get it. I, just for future topics for discussion, and I'm sure people are working on it in the police department perhaps, but electric bike ordinances, we need to do something, there's, there's going to be an accident soon. And I get it that an ordinance may not prevent that necessarily, but we should do something to kind of control that because they come up so fast. I walk on the walking path all the time and boy, it takes nothing. When they're going 25 miles an hour. You know, you look around, you don't see anybody and all of a sudden they're right on you, so. And with the number of people wearing headphones, even when you go, you know, on your right, they don't hear you, so. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do know the police department is looking into it and taking public input, inviting public input. So I would actually ask, let's say, WPD to be paying attention, possibly come and brief the council. When you feel like you have enough information to share with us as far as the progress and what you found out. I will also make just another announcement, can't say this enough to people. The forestry department is going to be in Ward D, taking down Emerald Ash Trees. And if you have a mark on your tree, that means it is marked for being taken down. If you want to keep your tree, you have to contact Park and Rec Department, Park, Rec and Forestry to let them know that you are going to be treating your tree. And that is a choice that you make. I did actually have someone ask, after I was on the radio last week, why don't, why doesn't the city just treat every tree? Well, the cost of treatment is a lot and you have to do it repeatedly. So when you're talking tens of thousands of ash trees at the cost of $300 plus for every tree to treat it. And then you would have to do that every year or every other year, it's just cost prohibitive for the city. Just to explain that. Any further announcements from the council? Then we'll go to City Manager Steger.
Thank you. A couple of quick announcements. The staff has been working through the budget for 2026. Tomorrow, we will be having a session on the future capital needs, including starting out with a, a review of the current debt level of the city. And when that debt is slated to expire. I would like to have a council work session ideally on the 22nd of September to go through the CIP projects as well as the council priority projects. And also present the, the debt picture of the city at that time. Second announcement, the 2024 audit has been completed by Aid Bailey, our audit firm. The firm will be here at a future meeting to give a brief presentation. The comprehensive annual financial report should be on the website shortly. And we will get each of you a copy of it on the council as well, but for the public, it will be posted on the website. And then finally, City Engineer Justin Peterson was not with us the last council meeting as he was accepting an award on behalf of the city. The city did receive an award for the Prairie Lakes Ice Arena from the American Public Works Association. And so that was quite the, quite the undertaking for the team that put that project together.
City Engineer Peterson, what was that award? It was the best, it was the best darn ice arena ever. I don't think that was the name of the award.
It's kind of got a long name. It's the, it's a structural project in small cities award. In national, nationally recognized APWA.
Perfect, thank you. There's no reason to go into executive session, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Councilman Mormons, seconded by Councilman Peters. Any discussion on that? Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Good night and God bless you, Watertown.